Good evening, everyone. I'm Allen Joins, Mayor of Winston-Salem. It's my honor and pleasure to call to order this October, excuse me, November 4th meeting of the Winston-Salem City Council and ask the city clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Larson.
Present.
Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Mundy.
Present.
Councilmember Cipio.
Present.
Mayor Protem Adams.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Present.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Here.
And Councilmember Burke.
Here.
Thank you very much. Would you please join the city council and me in a moment of silence? Thank you. Would you join the city council and me in the place of allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which is theirs, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our sergeant-at-arms tonight is Lieutenant Barry Martin. Lieutenant, thank you for being with us tonight. I'd like to turn the meeting over for a presentation by our city manager for his regular updates.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a few things tonight. One, to remind our citizens that leaf collection began today. The city's starting in service in two quadrants at a time this year, in the eastern and the southern quadrants right now, which cover areas east of US 52 and south of Salem Parkway. And then, once those quadrants have been serviced, crews will move to the western and the northern quadrants. So I know I've seen leaf piles out there today, and our university folks talked a lot about leaves for the last couple hours. So it'll be interesting to see how that goes this year. Our folks will be doing a great job, I'm sure. Our WISTA is going to be offering free bus rides to the pole tomorrow, Tuesday, November the 5th. They'll be available on all fixed routes and TransAid/Par Transit Service routes. They simply need to board any WISTA bus. No special pass or documentation is required. They're encouraged to use the service for traveling to polling locations, work, school, or other destinations. There's a couple of different opportunities for public input that are upcoming that I wanted to make sure everyone was aware of. On the WISTA bus route improvements, residents are encouraged to take a survey regarding proposed bus route changes to improve services. The survey is available until November 16th at WST, well, wstransit.com. So I encourage people to go and take that survey. The budget and performance management department also has provided residents with an opportunity to give their input on priorities for the next two-to-four-year period regarding city services and community investments that council will be looking at as a part of your strategic planning sessions. That survey is available, again, on our website under Strategic Plan. And the Metropolitan Transit Plan 2050 is out there to help shape the future of transportation in our community. Residents are again asked to give their feedback on key priorities and proposed improvements. And again, that's on our website. It has the link to that survey. And we do appreciate all of our residents that are completing those surveys to give their input into these valuable and important processes. In terms of several events that are coming up, the Minority and Women on Business Enterprise Division of the Business Inclusion and Advancement Department will hold a MWB mixer on Wednesday, November 6 from 5:30 to 7:30 at the Benton Convention Center. It's an opportunity for these types of businesses to promote themselves and to connect with city and county government and other city businesses and organizations. I had somebody this weekend tell me they were pleased and were going to be joining that. On November 7th at 5:30 PM, the MWB division is also hosting a North Carolina historically underutilized business certification day, which is a virtual event to help minority and women-owned businesses apply for statewide uniform certification. The certification is free and valid for four years if they get that. The Sedg Garden Recreation Center is offering Steam Day on Friday, November the 8th from 4 to 6. There'll be free activities for children, which focus on science, technology, engineering, art, and math. And you can register by calling the Recreation Center, again, at the Sedg Garden Recreation Center. This Friday, November the 8th at 10 AM, the fire department will recruit class, will have Recruit Class 34 graduation at the Haynes brand Theater. This class consists of 21 recruits who have proven themselves to be dedicated members of the Winston-Salem Fire Department. They've endured seven months of intensive physical and mental training, and they're now ready to move on to be full-fledged firefighters. And we appreciate their commitment to the safety of our community and our residents. And finally, in terms of events, on Thursday, November 21st at 11 AM, the Historic Resources Commission Historic Recognition Committee will hold a historic marker unveiling for the Brown Elementary School, which was a school for African-American students in the early part of the 20th century. It will be installed at the corner of 11th Street and Dublin Drive. Many of the descendants of Robert Washington Brown, for whom the school is named, will be in attendance. A couple of recognitions. Thanks to the Human Relations DEI Department for hosting the 2024 International Food and Music Festival a couple Saturdays ago, October 26th in Corbin Plaza. The event was a great way to showcase many different cultures in our community and in the city. Their food, music, and vendors, they had a great crowd and lots of good time. And then, as we just celebrated the Veterans' Day Parade this past Saturday and Veterans' Day coming up next week, we want to thank all of our city employees who are veterans of the armed forces for their service, commitment, and the sacrifices they have made for our country. We're fortunate to have them as a part of our team. And just a little preemption, as I mentioned, the city, Winston-Salem University folks have spent a tremendous amount of time, and they just got through talking about how they were going to balance the budget for next year with a variety of fees and cuts and services. And so, it'll be interesting to see how many of them show up in June to continue to tell you what they thought from that meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Pete.
Thank you.
Any questions, Mr. Pete, Mr. Mundy?
Do you know where we might get a graphic of the free rides to the pole so we can push that out through our own social media?
Dotma will get that, and I'm sure somebody behind me.
Somebody shaking my head. Yes, Sue will take care of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pete. We do have two honorary honors tonight. May we have the first one, please?
Resolution honoring the 2024 City of Winston-Salem University graduates. Whereas, there are 20 city residents who have successfully completed City of Winston-Salem University: Scott Andre Bowen, Luther Grant Anderson, Ramona Ramsey Brooks, Melanie Chandler, Jeremy Cole, Ailey Dell, Jimmy Hodson, Amy Hubbard, Vivian V. Joyner, Aubrey N. Kaler, Vanessa McDowell, Ben Mormon, Yolanda Moses, Justin R. Patterson, Sean Rapp, Sharon Evans Rollinson, Marlin L. Wilkins, Sarah E. Willett, Ramona Williams, Maria Chen Xiao. And whereas, the course is intended to provide residents with a deeper understanding of the inner workings of city government, and whereas, the coursework has included over 33 hours covering 20 city departments and divisions, completing a ride along with the Winston-Salem Police Department or with the Winston-Salem Fire Department, attending a city council or committee meeting, and completing one of the following: shadowing a CityLink agent, a historic downtown walking tour, a tour of the Archie Elidge wastewater treatment plant, or a 2018 Bond bus tour, and completing a budget project. And whereas, their dedication has resulted in a better understanding and appreciation of city government and has given them the resources to better serve their community. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and the Winston-Salem City Council hereby approve honoring the aforementioned 2024 City of Winston-Salem University graduates and wish them much success with their future as community leaders.
Is there a motion?
Some move.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Protem, second by Councilmember Taylor. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
There's no one opposed, I'm sure. So we're happy to present this resolution to the class, and we thank you for your participation. And City University, as I told you, you're a special group. You were picked because of your skills and your connections to our community. I'm going to recognize Ramona Ramsey Brooks for some comments from the class.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
It has been our pleasure to the microphone.
Turn around.
Speak to the mic.
Hard to hear you.
We've got a hand mic there she can use.
If I could, yeah. Thank you.
We have to turn.
It has been our pleasure to participate in this.
It's not on.
Turn it on.
Justin's going to get distracted.
Better? Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you for allowing us to participate this year. Thank you, Mayor Joins, for the opportunity. We would like to take the time to recognize the two people who have made it possible for us to be here, have spent the last several weeks with us, and have been on us to get our work done, but also introduced us to our city. Again, it reinvigorated how we thought about our city. And beyond that, even more so, appreciate our city staff, those men and women that work every day for us in the city. Catalina Stewart, would you please come forward?
Oh, okay.
This is Catalina, and she takes care of all of the logistics for us and makes sure that we get everything that we need for our class. So thank you. Here's a small token of appreciation from the class.
Five.
This Susan Spainal, would you please come forward?
Woo!
Do not be fooled by her demeanor. She's a very strong, forcible person. She has a lot that she provides. What we've learned from her is through her eyes, we have seen how important our city is, how important the staff are, and all that they do for us. Those folks who have gone, have been deployed to Western Carolina, work for the city. And so, we were able to meet them and talk to them and understand their commitment to what they do for us as citizens in this great city. I want you all to respect them and treat them well, because we need them.
Yeah.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Ms. Brooks, and once again, we greatly appreciate your devoting to many hours it took to participate in this program. We've got to do a little bit of the logistics change here. If we might ask the university class to go ahead and exit, we've got another group we need to bring in here. So thank you very much.
Then she went to work for a nonprofit.
Well, for years.
I knew at one point, but I can't think of who it is.
It's not coming.
Yes, he worked out.
It's gone.
That opened up a lot of seats.
Comes to AKAs.
Will we see any pink?
And green. It's pink and green together.
I guess that's why Cheryl's not wearing red.
Must be an AKA. Is she an AKA too?
I don't know. So she's wearing a pink cup on her leg.
Ladies, welcome to our city hall. There's a lot of pink and green out there tonight.
And we're glad to have the Alpha Kappa Alpha with us tonight. And I say that carefully because the former Mayor Protem Burke instructed me carefully on how to say those words about this sorority and honor group. So, Madam Clerk, if you would read our resolution, please.
Resolution recognizing Phi Omega Chapter Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, Inc., Centennial Celebration. Whereas, Phi Omega Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, Inc. was the first graduate chapter chartered in North Carolina on February 14, 1924. And whereas, since its inception, the members of Phi Omega Chapter have given tirelessly to the Winston-Salem and Forsyth County communities with Ivy arms, affordable housing, and provided thousands of dollars in college scholarships. And whereas, Phi Omega Chapter members are an example of excellence, serving as community leaders, elected officials, entrepreneurs, philanthropists, and networkers promoting service in every endeavor. And whereas, the late Dr. Barbara K. Phillips, a native of Winston-Salem and a former member and president of Phi Omega Chapter, served as 20th International President of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, Inc. And whereas, the first two African-American women and Phi Omega Chapter members to serve on the Winston-Salem Board of Aldermen were Dr. Virginia K. Newell and the late Vivian H. Burke. Dr. Newell served from 1977 to 1993. Mrs. Burke served from 1977 until her death in 2020. She was Mayor Protem from 1989 to 1993, and from 1997 to 2020. Whereas, Phi Omega Chapter has a strong history and presence in serving the community, state, nation, and internationally. During the centennial year under the leadership of President Evelyn P. Akry, Phi Omega collaborated with members of the Divine Nine Organizations in sponsoring nine community service impact projects and established an endowed scholarship Community Grant Fund at the Winston-Salem Foundation. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and city council of the City of Winston-Salem do by hereby commend and congratulate Phi Omega Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated for 100 years of service to all mankind in the City of Winston-Salem.
Motion to approve the resolution.
Don't move.
To my Mayor Protem, second by Councilmember Taylor. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
I know there's no opposition. So Evelyn Akry, would you come join me at the podium? Thank you, and Madam President, and members of the Alpha Phi, Alpha Phi, Alpha Kappa. I about messed it up. Alpha Kappa Alpha, excuse me.
Dr. Burke is looking down.
But seriously, we are so grateful for everything you've done for our city and throughout the triad area, going all the way back to the Ivy arms project that I worked on with a number of you years and years ago, to what your present day priorities are. So, Mrs. Akry, thank you for your leadership, and I'll present this resolution to you. And please feel free to offer comments if you'd like.
Good evening.
On behalf of the 263 members of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, Phi Omega Chapter, we thank you for this great honor and recognition as we celebrate 100 years of sisterhood, service to the Winston-Salem community. Five visionary women, Marguerite Adams, Maude Young Ray, Adelaide Smith Turner, Audrey Williams, and Mamie Williams, charted the first graduate chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha in North Carolina, right here in Winston-Salem. We turn North Carolina pink and green. Sixteen years after our beloved sorority was founded on the campus of Howard University, we are immensely proud that Phi Omega was the home chapter of our 20th International President, Dr. Barbara K. Phillips. And to date, Dr. Phillips is the only person from North Carolina to hold the highest office in our sorority. And you have heard that Dr. Burke and Dr. Newell were the first African-American women to serve on the Board of Aldermen. And we are so proud that we have our sister, Linda Jackson Barnes, as well as Renee Phillips, who served 16 years as the city secretary. And Linda Barnes is serving and keeps our mayor straight. Phi Omega has been celebrating all year long. We have been celebrating, and we wanted our celebration to be more than just glitz and glam. Now, we're going to have glitz and glam on November the 16th. We have a wonderful gala planned. But Phi Omega's theme for the year is 100 for 100. We wanted our centennial celebration to be a positive impact in our community. It was our initial goal, as you heard, for this year to raise $100,000 for scholarships and community grants. We are proud to announce that we have exceeded that goal and have established a $100,000 endowed scholarship and a $50,000 community grant fund with the Winston-Salem Foundation. And anytime you reach a goal, you know you have a stretch goal. So our stretch goal is $200,000, and we are still accepting donations. Phi Omega's celebration has included 100 acts of service and 100 acts of sisterliness. This year, we have donated over 3,000 personal care items to shelters, and over 20,000 personal care items to the Winston-Salem Forsyth County School System. We served over 500 families during our Centennial Community Day, and other local sororities and fraternities joined with us in our celebration, and we participated in building a Habitat House. We packaged over 30,000 baby and adult diapers for the North Carolina Diaper Bank. Together, we work with over seven nonprofit agencies to meet the needs during our programs, to meet the needs of some of our nonprofits here in the city. So we are very proud of the things that we have done here in Winston-Salem. As mentioned in our resolution in 1986, the visionary members of Phi Omega formed Phi Omega, Inc. to create Ivy Arms, a 44-unit housing complex to meet the need of affordable housing in east Winston-Salem. These are just a few tangible things which represent the heart of who we are: women committed to Winston-Salem and making a difference in the lives of our citizens. They're already standing, but I was going to ask them to stand if they're seated. These beautiful ladies of pink and green. Thank you again for your continued support. The members of Phi Omega look forward to the future with hope and determination. We know Phi Omega's best days are yet to come. Our first century has been extraordinary, and together, we will continue to live out our motto, our sorority motto: service to all mankind, to lead us into the next 100
is two parts, the consent agenda and the general agenda. It's always the practice
years. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, President Akry. And again, thank you to all of you for making our city of our city council to take the consent agenda as the first order of business. Items on this agenda have been unanimously recommended by a committee of the council or are being submitted in accordance with established city procedure. There'll be no discussion a much better place. Thank you. of the items on this agenda unless the council member so requests, in which event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered individually. Items not removed from the consent agenda will be enacted with one motion. Councilmembers, are there any items you wish to pull tonight? Larson?
Mr. Mayor, I have nine, 14, and 15.
Say again.
Nine.
Number nine, number 14, and 15.
15.
15.
Nine, 14, 15.
Okay, thank you. Any others? Is there a motion on the balance?
Motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that is unanimous. We'll go to item 10, nine, please.
Item C9, ordinance amending City Code, Chapter 2, Article 3, Civil Service Board Regulations for the City of Winston-Salem.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes, we've had a lot of discussion over the last several months on this item, but I thought it would be nice, because it's sort of coming into final fruition, to talk about the composition of this commission, this committee, and how you might involve yourself in it if you wanted to.
Attorney, do you want to comment on that?
My behalf to Mayor. our motto, our sorority motto: Service to All Mankind, to lead us into the next 100 years. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, President Akri, and again, thank you to all of you for making our city a much better place. Thank you.
We'll now go to our regular agenda, and as you know, the City Council, the agenda is two parts: the consent agenda and the general agenda. It's always the practice of our City Council to take the consent agenda as the first order of business. Items on this agenda have been unanimously recommended by a committee of the council or are being submitted in accordance with established city procedure. There'll be no discussion of the items on this agenda unless the council member so requests, in which event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered individually. Items not removed from the consent agenda will be enacted with one motion. Council members, are there any items you wish to pull tonight? Larson?
Mr. Mayor, I have nine, 14, and 15.
Say again.
Nine.
Number nine, number 14, and 15.
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
Nine, fourteen, fifteen.
Okay, thank you. Any others? Is there a motion on the balance?
Motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that is unanimous. We'll go to item nine, please.
Item C9, ordinance amending City Code, Chapter 2, Article 3, Civil Service Board Regulations for the City of Winston-Salem.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes, we've had a lot of discussion over the last several months on this item, but I thought it would be nice, because it's sort of coming into final fruition, to talk about the composition of this commission, this committee, and how you might involve yourself in it if you wanted to.
Attorney, do you want to comment on that?
My behalf of the Mayor, Mayor Joins, Mayor Protem Adams, and council members, as you may recall, the application process for this civil service board commenced a couple of weeks ago and ended on October 31st. We have at least 20 applications. We need to review those to make sure they're compliant with the requirements of the civil service board ordinance that you all adopted, consistent with local legislation. But it will be a five-member board, as I indicated before. Two of the members will be elected by the Police and Fire Department, one each, and then you all, well, let me back up, before it gets to you all, then the Police Chief and the Fire Chief will select a member, then you all will select a member, and then the board will select the fifth member. And we are hoping that that election process will take place early next year. The purpose of this ordinance amendment that you have before you is to deal with the absentee ballot process. We initially thought it would require about 60 days to get that in place, and now we're looking at about 30 days.
Could you provide a brief summary of what this board actually does?
Based upon the legislation that was enacted, the board will basically hear appeals related to certain disciplinary actions, including suspensions, terminations, and transfers, but the disciplinary actions are listed in the ordinance itself. It's not all disciplinary actions, just those listed in the ordinance.
Thank you. Move approval.
Second. Motion and second, second by Councilmember Taylor. All those in favor, we're gonna do this by, okay, so those in favor, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. Thank you. That motion passes. Seven in favor, one opposed. Councilmember Burke voting in the negative. Okay, Councilmember Larson, item 14?
Item C14, consideration of items related to the agreement with North Carolina Department of Transportation for additional sidewalk and intersection project funds in the City of Winston-Salem.
Mr. Larson?
This has a question of old projects that are still holding out there, maybe, and this may not be the forum to discuss that, but I'm extremely interested in the Brewer Street sidewalk, which when I came on council eight years ago was already funded and still has not been completed. Do we have a status report on that sidewalk? DOT is funding part of that.
Sure. Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of council, Brewer Road is one of the projects that we have here on our Capital Projects List. It is not one that we have in engineering. It's in Winston-Salem DOT. They're managing that project for us, so I'll hand that one over to Mr. Fensler.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of City Council, Councilmember Larson, specifically to the Brewer Road sidewalk, you are correct, that is funded by the NPO and will be managed by Winston-Salem DOT. It's a locally administered project. Right now, we're finishing up a couple locally administered projects through the calendar year '24 and '25, and that project is scheduled for right-of-way, which is kind of a major milestone, so it'll be in design and right-of-way delivery in late 2025 or early 2026. That's the schedule for that particular project that you're referencing.
Thank you. I'll leave it to my successor to pound you some more on this.
Thank you.
You have a motion, Mr. Larson?
Move approval.
Second. Motion second by Councilmember McIntosh. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Item C15?
Item C15, consideration of items related to Main and Liberty Streets' two-way conversion.
Mr. Larson?
This is another project in the South Ward. It's being listed in the Northwest Ward, I think, in the minutes here. I think South Ward is very interested in how this project unfolds. We've been waiting eight years for it to start, and I'm thrilled and excited that you are now sending it out to buy and get a contract on it. It's an important part for Old Salem, it's an important part for the south part of the city, the cultural corridor running from Trade Street down to School of the Arts. This will be an important link to that. So, congratulations on this, and I move approval of it.
Thank you for your support.
Second by Councilmember Monday. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Thank you, Councilmember Larson. We'll now go back to the general agenda, which is comprised of the following: there's a presentation from Visit Winston-Salem, public hearings on demolition ordinances, a resolution to increase the loan for Front Street Capital's Union Cross industrial building, modernization of downtown Winston-Salem parking system, and implementation of Affordable Housing Development Program; the downtown Winston-Salem Improvement District Annual Report, as well as consideration of scheduled changes for the November meetings and three public hearings for road closures, as well as a resolution for continuum improvement care grant submission, fund acceptance, and sub-grantee agreements. When a public hearing is called, I'll give individuals in the council chambers an opportunity to speak. If there is any opposition to any of the rezoning items, there'll be proponents and opponents. We'll each be given 15 minutes for presentations and three minutes for rebuttal. If no one wishes to speak, I'll close the public hearing, and the City Council will consider the item. We're televising this meeting live tonight on TV 13, as well as the city's YouTube page, and it will be replayed tomorrow morning at 9:00 a.m. and again Wednesday evening at 9:00 p.m. Of course, copies of our agenda, as well as videos of previous meetings, are always available online at the city's website, and just click on the "Watch Meetings Online" option. May we have item G1, please?
Item G1, presentation from Visit Winston-Salem.
Thank you. We're fortunate to have with us Stephanie Pace Brown, who is the president of Visit Winston-Salem. Ms. Brown, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and members of City Council. It's a real pleasure to be here with such distinguished company tonight. Thank you for allowing me to give you a brief presentation and share our new advertising campaign with you. I'm here today with the leadership team of Visit Winston-Salem, Christian Schroeder, Brandy Evans, and Jennifer Clyburn. Our team member, Ramona Williams, just graduated with the university class, and our team member and sports sales manager, Bonnie Burnett, is with us, too. So, I thought I'd start with just a brief overview of what we do and why we do it. Visit Winston-Salem exists to attract overnight visitors to Forsyth County. The advertising we do shapes the image of Winston-Salem, and when we do this very well, it creates a positive awareness and brand image for Winston-Salem as a place to visit and a place to relocate, move a business, and go to college. The public purpose of our work is to create economic vitality through visitor spending. Bringing non-residents into the city enhances the customer base for our local businesses, supports jobs, and generates taxes. We do this work through our sales program that attracts meetings, group tours, and sports events, and our marketing program that targets overnight leisure travelers to visit. In 2023, people who visited Forsyth County spent more than $1 billion with local businesses, supporting nearly 7,000 jobs and generating $73 million in state and local tax revenue. In total, more than 7 million people visited Forsyth County and almost 3 million stayed overnight. I'd like to briefly cover the performance of the past fiscal year that ended in June, and then I'll share our new advertising campaign. Our group's sales department works to attract meetings, conventions, group tours, and sports events. The outstanding service they provide to groups and signature events enhances the attendee experience and keeps them coming back. Sales is a numbers game, but numbers depend on building strong relationships with clients and community partners. Our team attracted 173 groups to Winston-Salem during the past fiscal year. We distributed 376 leads to local hotel partners. We booked 185 groups, including conventions, meetings, sports tournaments, and group tours. Some recent highlights include the North Carolina League of Municipalities City Vision Annual Conference that was hosted by the City Manager's Office and all of you, the Commission on Accreditation of Law Enforcement Agencies that was hosted by the Winston-Salem Police Department, the International Black Theater Festival, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners that met in August. Those are just four of the 173 groups that we helped to bring to the community last year. Of course, that success would not have been possible without your support for the renovation of the Benton Convention Center, a true economic driver for this community. In total, our team, working with dozens of community partners, booked more than 58,000 room nights and generated $78 million of economic impact. Sports events, from youth soccer to lacrosse to NCAA tournaments, sports are an important part of the tourism customer base. This is a list, there, oops, it's supposed to move. This is a list of some of the 43 sports events that Visit Winston-Salem and our partners booked or supported in the past year. We have a sales manager that's dedicated to the sports market and services team that ensures that the groups keep coming back. Our leisure marketing attracts individuals for getaway visits and boosts attendance at special events. We have been working to increase the impact of our leisure marketing by leaps and bounds. We're not looking for incremental improvements, we're looking for big gains. VisitWinstonSalem.com inspires travelers to plan a visit and discover what our local businesses and organizations have to offer. Our sessions to the site tripled last year, getting close to 1 million, and our goal this year is to exceed 2.2 million. A new and improved calendar of events was launched this summer in partnership with the Arts Council, the Downtown Partnership, and Greater Winston-Salem, Inc. Local businesses and organizations can have a listing and contribute to the calendar of events all for free. Our media relations team works with local partners to host journalists and social media influencers. Those efforts generated 120 million impressions last year, and that's free publicity for local businesses and organizations. We have an email newsletter that was distributed previously a couple of times a year. We've taken that to monthly, and it goes out to 45,000 subscribers, and we've increased distribution of our visitor guide, so you should be seeing that around town more frequently. So, now on to the brand campaign. Last month, we launched a new brand campaign. The campaign replaces "Look Forward, Travel Back" that was developed five years ago. Our goal was to evolve the brand and dial up the vibrancy, youthfulness, inclusivity, and representation. We want to represent the rich history and culture of Winston-Salem and embrace the contemporary vibrancy of what the city has achieved. In other words, we want our advertising to reflect the scope of what Winston-Salem has to offer and the diversity of the people who live here and visit here. Today, I'm showing you the campaign that targets leisure visitors to visit from North Carolina, Greenville, South Carolina, Atlanta, Roanoke, and Washington, D.C. There is a different series of ads that will focus on meetings, sports, and groups. The brand personality we are communicating is that we are a place that's easygoing, genuine, and resilient. The campaign is called "Twice is Nice." It's a play on being a city with two names and the complement of our rich cultural roots and the contemporary spirit of innovation and fun. First, you'll see a set of four 15-second video spots. I'll go back. The sound is really an integral part of this. I wish I knew it well enough to narrate it for you. So, Jamie, I know time is precious, so if you'd like, I can tell you the content of the ads, and we can move on to the print.
Yeah, let's do that, please.
Would you like to do that? So, let's go ahead and play it, because I think that the visual quality will show you a real watershed from the evolution of where we were to showing the scope and diversity. And so, these ads are, they pair two things that are complementary to each other. So, whether it's southern dining, breweries, sports, our historic attractions, the fun of downtown, this campaign enables us to showcase the full scope of what we have to offer, and it's also very flexible. We can continue to capture more video and more assets and include more and more things as the campaign develops. So, these are the first four 15-second spots that have been developed for the campaign launch. But as we move forward, we'll be able to collect additional assets to incorporate into the campaign. I think there's one more, and then I'll show you some digital imprint. So, you can see that the campaign concludes with Winston-Salem, "Twice is Nice," and invites travelers to come on in. Okay, I think that was the fourth one. Okay, so we'll send you a link to that, so you can see the whole thing. All right. And so, then there's a whole series of these. These are advertising concepts, just to show the kinds of content that can be paired together, and then they're resized to fit digital ads or print ads. So, you can see the premise is, what do you get when you cross something with something, an experience that echoes, where the echoes of the past guide your steps towards future adventures? And so, here, it's historic elegance and scenic trails, or creative spaces and lakeside adventures, southern delights and craft brews, or lavish gardens and colorful creativity, historic charm and live music, vineyard views and romantic escapes, fine dining with hands-on discovery, living history with city play, power for football with city play, soulful flavors and playful art. Visit Winston-Salem, it's twice as nice, come on in. So, that's the campaign. There'll be additional iterations that we'll continue to roll out. It's already performing very well and is heavily optimized to reach travelers in all of these.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. And you might have a question of Ms. Brown. Very comprehensive and sounds very effective, and we should have asked for getting a lot more visitors here. We love that.
It's a team sport. Thank you very much.
Right. Thank you, Ms. Brown. Go to item G2, please.
Item G2, resolution approving city-funded staffing and other assistance for select special events, including community parades.
Mr. Rao is going to tell us what this is all about, I believe. Mr. Rao?
Evening. Mayor Joins, Mayor Protem Adams, members of the City Council. So, over the years, the city has supported a number of community events, providing police services or barricades, use of the Recreation Parks Department mobile stage, garbage collection. Sometimes, we've provided these services at minimal or no cost to the event organizers. We have a special event permit process where this information is gathered in terms of what kind of city support may be needed, so we know what the cost of it is. And then in some cases, the city has either provided a financial sponsorship or just provided the services, the support, at minimal or no cost. In recent years, the city has received more requests for city support at minimal or no cost to organizers, and so the item before you tonight is a resolution that would establish criteria for when the city would consider providing those services either at minimal or no cost to the organizer, either through a financial sponsorship or just not charged for the support. So, those criteria are: the community event must take place annually and demonstrate a long-term commitment to serve in the community. Attendance or admission to the event is free for residents. The event attracts broad-based attendance from throughout the community. The location of the event typically is not self-contained in a designated facility like a stadium or an arena, and then event organizers can demonstrate that at least half of the overall cost of the event is covered by sponsorships and other fundraising that they've generated. So, the resolution would establish those criteria. It also states that the FY 2526 budget would include dedicated funding to support those events that meet the criteria and are approved by the City Council for that kind of support. Right now, oftentimes, in those cases where the city is providing those resources, the departments that provide it are paying for it out of their operating budgets. This would establish a dedicated budget for this. If an organization does not meet the criteria, then they would have to cover the cost out of their own funds. Be happy to answer any questions.
That's Mr. Rao. Councilmember Burke?
Thank you, Mr. Rao. In criteria number one, can you tell me how individuals would be able to demonstrate a long-term commitment to serve in the community? How would they be able to fulfill that criteria?
Councilmember Burke, I believe that they would have to submit an application multiple times, so that they've shown that they've held the event. You know, we don't necessarily establish a specific number, whether it's two years or three years, but somewhat of a track record that they are providing this event to the community and thus demonstrating that commitment.
So, individuals, for the first time, the initial time, making a request for city resources, they would not be provided city resources because they would not have a history of establishing criteria? Am I understanding that correctly?
That's correct. That's correct.
I think that's a little steep. I really do. I think we need to think about that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Brown. This is the Dugconver Finance Committee, Councilmember Clark. I'll move approval.
Second.
Second by Mayor Protem. Any further discussion? Not all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is passes a vote of seven to one, and Councilmember Burke voting negative. Item G3, please.
Item G3, public hearing and consideration of 311, 313, 315 Lakeview Boulevard located in the East Ward. Ordinance ordering the demolition and removal of a structure.
Mr. Hunter.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the City Council, Samuel Hunter, Assistant Neighborhood Services Director. You may recall that we brought you some units for demolition for your consideration in Lakeside in the East Ward of Winston-Salem. This afternoon, we have a number of different units before you. So I'm just going to give you a little history log for some of these units, and then I'm going to give you some additional context on these units as well. For 311 Lakeview Boulevard, complaint and notice of hearing was filed on January 9, 2012. A finding and order was issued on February 8, 2012. The dwelling was found vacated and closed on March 26, 2012, and we sent a notification letter to the owner in September 2024 that this item was going before the City Council. So that's for 311 Lakeview Boulevard. 313 Lakeview Boulevard, similar timeline, August 2, 2011, was the complaint and notice of hearing. Finding and orders were issued on September 29, 2011, and the dwelling was found vacated and closed on November 14, 2011. Notification letter was sent out September 27 of 2024. 315 Lakeview Boulevard, a complaint and notice of hearing was issued on August 11, 2011. Finding and order was issued on September 29, 2011. Dwelling was found vacated and closed on November 14, 2011, and a notification was sent to the owner on September 27 of this year informing him that it was going before you. We do have some photos, some recent photos in your council packet. I will make a note that we have been working with this property owner for these three units, 311, 313, and 315, to bring those into compliance. As of today, the property owner has brought these units into compliance. I stand ready for any questions.
Questions, Mr. Hunter. Councilmember Clark.
If that's the case, we don't need to do anything.
That is correct. There's no need for a hearing. He was just explaining why.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? So do we need a motion to remove this from the agenda?
Yes, that would be appropriate.
Okay, good. So I entertain a motion. It came from your committee. It's your ward, of course.
It's my ward, yeah. I move for.
Remove this item.
All of this item on these particular units.
Okay. Motion to remove this from action. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mayor Protem. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. And that is unanimous to remove that from the agenda. May I have item G4, please?
Item G4, public hearing and consideration of 217, 219, 221, 223 East Drive located in the East Ward. Ordinance ordering the demolition and removal of a structure.
Good. Mr. Hunter.
Thank you. I'm going to lump three of these together because they do have the same service date, and you can see on the presentation, these are updated photos that we have taken. So we'll start with 217, 219, and 221 East Drive. Again, all of these are in the Lakeside neighborhood. Complaint and notice of hearing was issued on March 22, 2012. A finding and order was issued on April 24, 2012. The dwelling became eligible for demolition under the six-month vacancy rule in November 26, 2012. A notice was sent to the property owner on September 27, 2024, informing them that they would be before you this afternoon. So that's for 217, 219, and 221. 223 East Drive, still in the same neighborhood, still same structure. Complaint and notice of hearing was filed on March 23, 2012. Finding and order was issued on April 27, 2012, and it became eligible for demolition on November 26, 2012. Notification was sent on September 27, 2024. Again, all of these units are in the same structure. We have sent a neighborhood conservation officer out there to do a recent inspection, and these units are not in compliance.
Any questions to Mr. Hunter? Mr. Clark.
And I may address this to the councilman of the ward. Have they made progress on them?
We have been working with them since we first brought this to your attention last year. They are making some progress on some units, but they are not making them on all. And we recently spoke with them this past Friday and told them that they need to bring them all up to standard. So they are quite aware that we're going to take this action tonight. It's been a while, as you can tell. We just can't tolerate any more of our properties for low-income people to be out of compliance. I don't care how large the unit is. Lakeside is huge, but people are living there, and it's deplorable to be able to see these units boarded up and the cavalier attitude of the owner not to bring them up to standard.
City Attorney.
Don't forget to open up the public hearing. I believe Mr. Poplori, who's the honor, said Ms. Hernandez was supposed to be here tonight. I'm not sure that I see her.
We're going to do that right now. This is a public hearing. If there is anyone in the council term who wishes to be heard on his proposed demolitions. Does anyone want to be heard on this item? If you would state your name and address for the record, please.
Erica Hernandez.
Pull the mic down. There you go.
My name is Erica Hernandez. I am working on bringing up the units that are 217, 219, and 221 and 223 East Drive. I do have some pictures that I took this afternoon, which we fixed up the front of the porch, front side of the units. We, I don't know if you all want to see the pictures that I brought with me that I took this afternoon. We do have a contractor that is working to get them remodeled from the inside.
Certainly, if the council takes action tonight to demolish, Mr. Hunter, correct me if I'm wrong, but there is somewhat of a grace period that if the significant progress is made, this council could reverse its actions. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct. They do have a 90-day timeframe to bring the unit into compliance after the final action of the City Council.
Okay. Councilmember Cipio, do you wish to make a motion?
Oh, you want to close the public hearing first?
Yeah. Anyone else wish to be heard? Is 90 days a reasonable time for you to? Okay, all right. Well, I'll declare the public hearing closed then and recognize, Councilmember Cipio.
I move that we move forward with the demolition of these buildings, these apartments.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Burke. Any further discussion? Not all in favor of the motion, which is to move forward with the demolitions of these items? Please vote yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Thank you, Councilmember Cipio. Next item, please.
Item G5, public hearing and consideration of a resolution authorizing an increase in the primary lender's deed of trust on its loan to Front Street Capital for the construction of a speculative industrial building at Union Cross Industrial Center.
Councilmember Ken Millet, please.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem Adams and members of council.
Good evening.
You will recall that in December of 2022, a $2.5 million loan was approved to Front Street Capital for the construction of a spec building at Union Cross Industrial Center. They have identified a tenant to take the entire space and are in the process of upfitting it specifically for that tenant. It has cost a little bit more than they had originally forecast to provide that custom space, so they have asked their primary lender for up to an additional $1.8 million for the project. I will note that that does not impact the city's loan amount or anything with the loan terms, other than increasing the deed of trust to the $10.4 million. A rodent team with Front Street Capital is here. Should anyone have questions?
Anybody have any questions? So Mr. Millet or Mr. Team? This is a public hearing. Anyone to be heard on this item? Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed, and Mr. Clark?
I'll move approval.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion on this item? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. And that is unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Team, for your investment. This has worked very well for all of us for buildings we've done in the past. Councilmember Cipio, you have a comment?
Yes, I just wanted to comment on the buildings that we've had at Union Cross. We've opened, we've had some ribbon cuttings recently with several buildings, and I want to congratulate the council that actually approved of the speculation of building buildings and making that Union Cross Business Park come to pass. We have some really great new businesses out there that are actually changing the shape of and the complexion of our community and what we do. And I think it's commendable. We should recognize the goodness of what those decisions do, bringing jobs and their international businesses, which is really wonderful for our community. So Ken Millet, I want to say thank you for your diligence and help putting these packages together for us.
Thank you, Councilmember Cipio, and we certainly look forward to spending even more time out there.
There you go. Thank you, Ms. Millet. Thank you, Mr. Team. Item G6.
Item G6, consideration of items related to modernization of on-street and municipal-maintained off-street parking systems throughout downtown Winston-Salem.
Mr. Fanzler.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem Pori Adams, members of the council. So I'll highlight this item because, as you remember, in the past two Public Works Committee meetings, that Winston-Salem DOT presented this item, and we've carried it through a number of discussion topics following those two meetings. And so if you recall, we advertised a request for qualifications in February to modernize the on-street and off-street parking facilities and programs in and around downtown Winston-Salem. And as we've committed in the past, Paybyphone was the highest-scoring firm and they're a leader in the parking, you know, kind of space nationwide. They offer really a modern solution that really offers a technology-based solution to our parking users in Winston-Salem and allows them to interface with a mobile application on a smartphone device with the municipally managed parking spaces. But the second component of this item really is about the ordinance amendments and changes to highlight a couple of things. Number one being obviously the rate increase to fund this program. And then it also includes some amendments that allow us, and the language in there allows us to deploy this technology-based solutions. It removes the nomenclature that references the old pay stations and/or meters. One of the things, though, that also included in your agenda packet was how we benchmark peer cities, because one of the major components of this is the rate increase, and we're proposing that $1.50 an hour rate increase. And we included in the agenda packet that peer city kind of benchmarking, and we went out really statewide to very comparable municipalities, and we benchmarked what they're doing with their rate structures. And that, of course, was included in the agenda packet as Exhibit A. And so we've hashed that out in the last two Public Works Committee meetings, and then following the September Public Works Committee meeting, staff was asked to go back into the community and conduct a couple of public meetings to present this publicly. And so staff did take from there and have two public sessions where we invited the public to come out and talk about this. And we received a number of comments, those largely, as you would expect, related to the rate increase. Those were related to the mobile application and folks that maybe have barriers there with smartphone applications. And then all those comments were, of course, included in your agenda packet as well as Exhibit B. So I'll pause there, and I say, well, why? Why are we doing this? And so the reason is, and really, staff is recommending approval for a couple of things. It doesn't take, you don't have to travel far outside this building into this City Hall North Lot to take a look at the parking equipment that we have there to know that our system is failing. We have struggles throughout the system with equipment that was deployed in the late '90s. You can imagine the challenges with those mechanical devices. And another reason for this, too, is we're trying to reduce that parking subsidy. One of the recurring things that you've heard from me in the previous two iterations is that we currently subsidize the parking fund to the tune of about $700,000. And by doing this rate increase and this technology, and really making sure our enforcement team is buying into this, we have the opportunity to reduce that subsidy and eliminate that moving forward. Then we're also trying to promote that downtown turnover. One of the things we want to do is value our curb space. One of the things that we haven't spent a lot of time talking about is this will also allow us to reduce that single-car dependency. You know, we awarded a large transit grant, a transit contract, and there's all kinds of these efforts that allow folks to choose alternate modes of transportation and really continue to value that curb space. And in closing, though, one of the major benefits of this that I think will be the biggest thing moving forward is the ability to get the granular data. With the mobile technology, everyone that has a parking stay and reserves that ride or that parking stay on their phone, that allows us to sample that park and allows us to get that granular data and make informed decisions in perpetuity moving forward. And the beauty of that is we're allowed to bring this back to this body in any iteration and discuss that, roll this out, communicate, tweak things, have an option where we can, how are we doing? Are we doing well? Where are folks needing the parks? Or where we have the highest turnover, et cetera? And we can have those conversations in perpetuity moving forward because of this program. So all that to say, as this parking program matures, we're going to be able to digest that, see where we're doing things well and where we're not. And so the item before you really is consideration of, number one, a contract with Paybyphone to deploy a parking program, organization, technology that will allow us to implement that mobile technology for parks. And two, the ordinance changes that I highlighted there regarding, largely around the rate structure and the parking technology implementation. And from there, Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Fanzler. I have one quick question. Understanding is that should the council, once this system's in place, should the council wanted to change rates or do away with rates in particular areas? You can do it pretty much with a flip of a switch, in a way.
It is. It is. So the language in the ordinance does allow for dynamic pricing, and so we'll have the ability to make that based informed decisions I talked about, but we will be able to make those adjustments in pricing based on where we're seeing that demand. It does give it that dynamic pricing capability. Yes, sir.
Good. Any questions?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Fanzler, I think a powerful slide that you have is the benchmarking peer cities slide. You know, I'd like for you to put that up, please, if you can. As we've said in the past, a lot of times, when we put together just like budgets and plans and things like that, once we vote on them, it doesn't mean that we can't come back and tweak it as to whatever the outcomes or the feedback we're getting or what the data is telling us. So that's a good thing, too. I want to thank you and the staff and your team and Public Works Committee for working on this. Again, we've been talking about this for at least my 15 years, that the technology that we've been using since probably most of the folk born here was teenagers is what's going on downtown, the majority of it, and the pay-by-app and the machines is relatively new in the past two or three years. But if you will go through quickly the peer city benchmarking and the haves and have-nots of what we have and don't have.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Pori, and thank you, Madam Clark, for putting that on the screen. What you see there is some of the peer cities, and we went from, you know, obviously Durham, Charlotte, Raleigh, Wilmington, even Asheville and Greensboro, so very comparable in size and solution. And one of the things that you've heard us talk about through committee, where we had much more detailed discussion, was that Winston-Salem remains the largest municipality that doesn't have the kind of this mobile technology that helps enhance their parking environment downtown. And that's a critical component that's missing in our city, that a lot of these municipalities that we're showing on the screen now have already deployed and are using that very well. But to do that, and because one of the key components, Mayor Protem Pori, is the fact that every one of these providers take their cut, right? And so when you raise the rate, you have to make sure that And so when you raise the rate, you have to make sure that what you're setting that rate is establishes what you can do to cover that subsidy, which is what we're trying to do. This is not a stab in the dark to try to make the money, but it's really to cover our expense, to make sure that we have that user interface and that experience that they can reserve their app and have that solution be at their phone. So thank you for that question.
Councilmember McIntosh?
If you leave that graphic up, the one city up there that is lower, Greensboro, $1 off-street, I read recently that they're reexamining their rate. They currently run, according to this study, they run a $3 million a year deficit on their parking program, so their rates are going to go up probably a good bit higher than ours. And the $700,000 a year deficit that we run, we have run that now for not just the last year, but we have been running that for quite some time. So we've been running, we've been subsidizing downtown parking for quite some time. That $700,000 represents what we spend on the BEAR program. The federal funding that we get for the BEAR program this year will go away next year. So next year, we're looking at an equivalent of, do we want to subsidize parking for $700,000? Or we don't pay for the BEAR program? So, I mean, it kind of puts it in fairly stark terms. I do regret jumping the amount so quickly. The downtown plan does call for a gradual rise. I would prefer for it to be that way, but we did just go through a budget cycle where we asked property owners for a 10% property tax increase that this council felt was unavoidable. If we were going to bring our staff pay raises up to the market so we could stop losing people, if we were going to do some other things like improve the quality of our street, which our citizens really wanted our maintenance levels to be higher, our parks to be better maintained, so we bit the bullet and said we were going to raise our property taxes. Going back and asking the citizens to continue to subsidize parking at that rate didn't seem like it was the right thing to do, so we opted to raise the rate all in one fell swoop. So it was a painful decision, but I think it's the right decision, and I think it's a decision that people will get used to when they find out that it will make parking downtown easier. When you go to a larger city and you use an app and you get used to it after a fairly short learning curve, it does make parking easier. Part of this program is to make it easier to park downtown, and people will figure that out fairly quickly. So I thank you for the hard work. I know staff has put in a tremendous amount of time on this. They've benchmarked it against a lot of other cities. They've done a bunch of research, and I really appreciate that, so thank you very much.
Ms. Clark?
Comment and a question. I paid $2 to park for 15 minutes at the Greensboro Airport last night. So I'll update your data right there. This is a big change. We got parking decks, parking lots, street parks, et cetera. How long is it going to take to implement all this?
Great question, Councilmember Clark. So Phase One will be on-street, and upon adoption tonight, then will be a transition cycle, which will include a marketing campaign, which is a crucial component of it, right? And we're looking spring of 2025 for Phase One, which will be on-street, followed by another marketing campaign and a little bit of infrastructure work with our off-street parking decks for probably summer to fall, where we do the off-street, the two municipally managed parking decks.
Thank you. Councilmember Cipio?
Mr. Fensler, I don't envy your job because you have two of the highest subsidized services that we provide to our community, that's parking and the Winston-Salem Transit System that we have been offering to the citizens with a very high price tag of what they are paying for. I don't envy you that, but I do, I've been thinking about this, and sometimes we're such privileged people in Winston-Salem. We just got so many good things. 25 cents parking is great. You know, it's been that way since I was a young adult, and it came that way because people used to park downtown who worked there all day long for free. And the residents, not the residents, the business owners complained that their customers couldn't park in front of their shops because they were taking up, the spaces were taken up by people working there and not paying. So, okay, we got 25 cents parking, sort of stop that. But when I thought about what else was going on back in the day, I realized we had in the city a stronger tax base from industry that was downtown. And so, yeah, 25 cents, not much. We no longer have that strong tax base. And so Winston-Salem has to change. We've got to change in many ways as these situations come up. One of the things that I've heard people saying is they don't want to use their phone to pay for parking. My 92-year-old aunt told me some years ago when she had her first smartphone and an iPad, she says, "If you don't stay current, you will be left behind." I tried to resist smartphones, but you know what? You are left behind. The other thing that happened when we had that 25 cents parking, we had a very vibrant bus system, and people rode the bus downtown because they didn't have as many cars. So you learn to ride the bus, you get off, you go shopping, you get back on the bus. Perhaps with a higher-paying little parking fee, people will decide that they might want to try taking the bus downtown. See if we can get that going, because that's the urban way of living. And so we're going to have to change. Our residents need to know we've got to change. And so I'm in favor of this parking. We should have increased it over the last 50 years slowly, and it's going up higher everywhere you go. So we're just going to have to be very much like other cities around us and bite that bullet. And I'm sure that residents will find a way to deal with that. Carpool is great. We want you to carpool downtown. Bring a friend. If you can't take the bus, you know, share the parking. You know, Kevin and I might come together. You can pay 75 cents, and I'll pay, we can pay that $1.50, right? So, you know, think about ways to make it work for you. Thank you.
Councilmember Monday?
I really want to echo a lot of what Councilmember Cipio just said. I'm going to support this, but at the same time, I want to express that I have heard from some of my citizens and others that they wish that we could implement this in phases, and they wish that we had something for older people who don't have a phone, a smartphone. But we've taken this long because oftentimes we try to make things perfect for every person, and that slows down a decision-making process. And many, many times I've said from this day is, we need to make change. We need to keep up with at least the cities in North Carolina, because we are competing globally for work and for workforce. And if we don't offer the city that people want to have businesses in, or if they don't want to come here to work, we're going to fail. So I wish that there were some ways to do that, and I'm going to trust that DOT will pursue some ways to accommodate problems as they arise. But I do think that this is something we need to move on and keep in mind as a cautionary tale, that while we're measuring twice, we take too long to cut.
Mr. Fensler, am I correct that you can actually, you don't have to do the app? You can actually call in and pay as well?
Mr. Mayor, you can't call the toll-free number without the smartphone app. Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions, Mr. Fensler? I'd recognize Councilmember McIntosh just came out of the Public Works Committee. Motion to approve. Second?
Second.
Second, my Councilmember Cipio. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no.
Discussion. Discussion.
I'm sorry? A big part, I didn't see you. Councilmember Bur-
We've all received emails from concerned citizens about the increase going up drastically, according to concerned citizens. We've also heard, I've received calls, we heard someone in our last meeting asking, can we consider a gradual increase? And I heard my colleagues say, well, you know, we can put it in place, and we can see how it works, we can always go back and tweak it. Why go back and tweak it? Why not put in place something that our citizens feel good about from the beginning? And if we need to add later on, increase, gradually increase later on, then that's something that we can come back and talk about. I think that because we have three council members who will be gone in two weeks and a new council coming on, maybe four new council members, but definitely three new council members, I think that we should table this and give the new council members an opportunity to make this huge, massive decision for this city, because they will have to deal with the consequences for the next four years, not the outgoing council members. Thank you.
Are you making a motion to table the item?
I move that we table item G six.
Is there a second?
I'll support it for discussion.
Okay, there's a motion to table this item until...
Yeah.
Just a minute.
Go ahead.
I'm trying to find out what the motion is.
The motion was to table the item, and I request it until the new council members are sworn in, seated, and have a chance to have some discussion, conversation regarding this item, so we can say December.
I think the motion's incomplete. We need a date.
Yeah. Well, the new council comes in December the 2nd, but we won't have an official meeting until December the 7th.
Let's table, I make a motion that we table item G six until the 3rd Monday in January.
Okay. Did you-
Yeah, I'll second that motion for discussion.
All those in favor of that motion, please indicate by voting.
No, we've already voted, so we're going to have to change.
All right, how about we just do this by a show of hands? All those in favor of the substitute motion, please indicate by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
So that's favored, all those opposed, a substitute motion, same time. Motion fails. We're back to the original motion, which is to approve the plan as presented, and that's what came up on our screens.
I think the original motion is up on the screen.
Okay, original motion, so.
So this is what we vote on electronically?
Yeah, so this come up electronically.
I don't have it.
All right, let's vote manually again. All those in favor of the original motion, please indicate by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. All those opposed? One. Motion passes seven to one. Thank you very much. All right, go now to item G seven.
Item G seven, consideration of items related to guidelines and implementation of the Affordable Housing Development Program.
Chantel McLam, would you give us just a brief summary? And we've talked about this a lot in great detail, and I'd like to hear just a brief summary of that, please.
Good evening, Mayor Jones, Mayor Protem Adams, members of City Council, Chantel McLam, Neighborhood Services Director. So as a recap for the Affordable Housing Development process, back in May, Housing Development staff was asked to prepare a process in order to expand available housing development funds, and therefore, staff began speaking with peer cities, having discussions as it relates to best practices, and developing a process that was transparent, fair, and predictable. Back in September, I brought an information item to the General Government Committee. That item included that process. It also included an implementation plan, an evaluation matrix, and also a marketing strategy. Last month, I brought the plan for action to the General Government Committee, which it was approved unanimously. So the item on the agenda tonight is twofold. One, to approve implementation of the Affordable Housing Development process, and two, to move $2 million from the construction loan program back to the Affordable, the ARPA revenue replacement plan to be used for affordable housing development. And with that, I have no presentation tonight, so with that, I stand prepared to answer any questions that you all may have.
Councilmember Cipio?
Just refresh my memory on this. As I recall, the plan said that you got points, you had to have a minimum ask for at least building three houses. Is that right?
So we'll have two processes. We'll have a LIHTC process, which will put out, LIHTC meaning low-income housing tax credits for larger developments. So we'll have a process for that, but we also have a RFP process for city-owned lots and funding. And for that, yes, the minimum requirement would be that you request at least three lots to develop.
Do we have a maximum request? Can somebody come in and request all of our city lots, and that's acceptable?
They could present a proposal to request many multiple city lots. However, they have to remember that we do have some caveats in our agreements that states that you have two years to develop what you state that you're going to develop in that scope of work in that two-year timeframe. So if you come in and you request 100 lots, you are required to build on 100 lots within a two-year timeframe.
But the lot is, we have some lots that's more, that's a quarter of an acre or less, and some that are more. So it's just, is it the lots that you're talking about that's a minimum or the number of houses?
No, it is the lot that is the minimum.
So if somebody wants an eight-acre lot, it's considered the same as a quarter-acre lot?
Yes, ma'am. But they're going to present a proposal with that lot. There has to be a clearly defined proposal for each lot that they are requesting to develop on, and so that when we're evaluating, or when a team, the committee, is evaluating these proposals, to ensure that they're viable proposals, that they will be able to develop what they state they can on these lots.
And so my concern, though, is that are we not favoring established builders and not motivating people to get into the development process? So, because you've got to have some experience, I believe, in the overall thing. So if we had a, say, we had a nonprofit organization that wanted to build a house, and they just want to see how well they could do with one, they would not be considered.
The object of the city-owned lots is to promote development of affordable housing, and therefore, in order for us to get the greatest bang we can out of our funding and out of our lots, we need to ensure that we're working with developers, whether they're new developers or long-term developers. We want to work with those that are interested in developing affordable housing. And we're going to offer some, we can't offer developer training, but we can offer training on our process. We can offer training to ensure that they present a responsive proposal to us and that they're judged fairly on that proposal.
I understand that to one point, but I think that seems a little biased to me somewhere. It seems that we're favoring people who are already established, but it doesn't encourage other entities to get into it. I'm just feeling a little uncomfortable about that.
That's honestly not the goal.
Thank you. You know, I think many of us have heard comments from citizens who would like for us to slow down a little bit in the process, because there's, I think there's some misunderstanding about how this works, so I'm wondering if maybe we ought to think about that.
Mayor, I've heard comments, and I see a number of people in the audience, that I think there's a request or a need for more information about this process. So I would move that we no consider this item until the November 18th meeting, so that we can meet and have more information about this. So I would move no consideration of this item.
Councilmember McIntosh moves no consideration of this item. The discussion is off. Not now. It's pretty well off. We will, and I'm saying to myself, to those of you who have called me, I'm happy to meet with you at your convenience. We'll find a time to discuss this. Thank you, Councilmember McIntosh. Thank you, Chantel.
Mayor?
Yes. And we're not going to discuss this particular item.
I was just wanting to know, is there a possibility that our staff or team could put together a couple of town halls, informational meetings for people in the community, where they get to go and ask, just like the budget or anything else?
That's perfect. I think we can certainly do that. All right, I- All right, item G eight.
Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember. We're not gonna talk about this item, right?
Well, Councilmember Adams asked about putting together some town halls to discuss this item. And I just want to remind you that homeowners asked for a meeting with you and with me to discuss this. So not a town hall.
I think we can do both.
Thank you.
John.
Maybe I don't understand a no-consideration, but my understanding was that once it comes back to council, that there's no discussion to be taken on it.
That's correct.
It'll just be voted up or down when it comes back on the 18th. Is that right?
Correct.
Is that what we're saying?
Correct. All right, item G eight.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand. Councilmember Larson, what was his question?
Councilmember Larson wanted to know if a no-consideration item, when it comes back to council, is simply a vote yes or no, or up or down?
No discussion?
Unless the council votes in a majority to open. All right, item G eight, please.
Item G eight, adoption of a resolution regarding the National League of Cities 2024 Annual Conference.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second. Second by Councilwoman McIntosh, moved by Councilwoman Clark. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no.
The motion indicated an alternate. We don't name it.
There's no alternate because based upon the schedule, looks like Councilmember Burke may be the only person present for the meeting on that Saturday.
Thank you.
All those in favor, please vote yes. And that is unanimous. Thank you. We do have a need for a closed session, and I recognize Councilwoman Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. I move the City Council going to a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-31811A4 to discuss matters related to the location or expansion of an industry or business city limits, and two, North Carolina General Statute 143-31811A1 and six, to continue the selection process for the next city attorney.
Second.
Personnel matters connected therewith, and to prevent the disclosure of information considered confidential pursuant to General Statute 160A through 1...
Thank you. Councilmember McIntosh seconds the motion. All those in favor of going into closed session, please say aye. Anyone opposed, go in closed session.